Good evening. Frank Swir, Waldorf Street, Wolf's Square. I voted for you tonight to ask you to please vote no on behalf of the refinancing package before you for several reasons. As with normal city fashion, all of the reports on this financing package were released just less than 24 hours ago to the public, even though RBC Capital has prepared them back on October the 14th. So that would actually predate the last council meeting when I asked for them and was lied to by our finance minister and said that they had not yet prepared them. According to the RBC reports that I'm holding right there in my hands that I received from the city's website, they were in fact prepared at that time when again I was given a bold face by the finance minister. So in addition, I can only, I'm looking at these amortization schedules and it looks to me like we're not saving very much on interest if anything. And in fact, total financing package is going to cost us $22.4 million in new interest debt to be added to our overall bond services if I'm reading this right. Looking at some of the prior bond services where we owe about $35 million in total payoff with interest, we're going to be rolling out a $46 million total payoff and gaining an additional three years on the total bond. It looks to me, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm kind of a football guy, you can tell by my attire tonight, it looks to me like the mayor's holding a $4 million football in his hand that's due on the 15th of this month. Between 2.5 million and 3 million on the three bonds with an additional 1 million and change due also on the 15th. And he wants to pump that down the road for three years. Pony last council meeting said it looks like he wants to kick the can, I say he wants to pump the football. But at any rate, punting that football for three years is going to cost the taxpayers of this city an additional $22.4 million. Any council member who can vote yes to this is truly in dereliction of their duties. And I've already contacted the attorney for the Wolf's Square City Taxpayer Association and asked that attorney to please start researching how I can file a civil suit against these council members holding personally responsible for that $22.4 million. Now perhaps your E and O insurance might pick that up, I don't know. But I as president of the taxpayers and I'm sure everyone sitting behind me and out on the streets who have no clue what's going on here do not want to pay an additional $22.4 million just to simply pump the football another three years. To me that's reckless. I don't see any reason in the world we would want to do that.
I hate to correct you, Mr. Sorek, but my figures show $4.588,000 due on September 15th and with the budget paid, he's not putting a dollar down.
So you're saying we owe 400,000 or 4 million?
Four million.
Okay. So I said it was, it was roughly.
It was not, it was not the 15th.
No, no, no. It's a little more than, I was, I was being more conservative as a conservative guy told you, but hey, I'll defer to your numbers. If you say we owe 4 million, I'll agree, it's not 3 and 4.
And I got a question for the mayor. Why isn't, during the 2014 budget being paid, the 2004 bond, the 2005 bond, the 2007 bond, and the 2010 bond, they're all due on November 15th? Why is it zero on the budget line?
The 2004 was paid off on September 15th.
Oh, you paid that off last Monday?
Yeah. That was the last payment on that one.
So I'm right, you're right.
Okay, so we're back to the 3 million dollar football that we were on.
How about the 2005, '07, and '10?
Because like I said in my email, our, the budget was prepared under the assumption that we will be able to take advantage of the favorable rates.
Well, you made a budget. I don't think you should make budgets with assumptions. Same with the $400,000 for sale of property.
We're going to get into that, Tony.
But that, this is the budget, Sorek.
Okay.
Okay, Sir Sorek, you make, you make a deal because of that. Again, I implore you to vote no tonight.
All right. Anyone else on pending legislation to the public?
Why don't the financial people that are here make their presentation? And they'll, they'll tell you the facts. I mean, you paint this anyway. I know Mr. Sorek has a lot of experience running businesses, so.
Again, with my perspective.
Financial people make their presentations, tell the facts.
This strikes your mayor once at a chat meet.
Hold on, hold on one second. Sir, is this on the same issue?
Uh, this is on the 2014 budget, but not on the bonds, Mr. Bear.
Not on the bonds, okay, fine. We're going to go back into the bonds.
Matthew Ford, 94 Oak Street. Thank you to the council for having me here today and for listening. I just want to touch base on the 2014 budget real quick. I didn't get a chance to review in full, but one thing that did stand out to me and hopefully the mayor can shed some insight on this. We're projected a 15% increase in our health insurance payments to our city employees. I found that number to be pretty high. Recently, a study by PricewaterhouseCoopers Health Research Institute projected the nationwide average for healthcare increase for 2015 to be 6.8%. So the rate of 15% increase seems like more than double the national address, or average, which was striking to me. Did a little bit of research, this chart right here represents the increase in health insurance rates over the past eight years. You'll see this top line, 12% was the highest that it's been back in 2007 and has trailed down ever since. So I have a couple of questions regarding that. And the first is, can we change our healthcare providers without union approval? Two, who is the current provider? And three, how many quotes did we get before we settled on that healthcare provider?
One, the increase is based on the usage, and they said here many times over, Matt, many of the people covered are retirees. There's more retirees on the healthcare than our active state employees. We met with the healthcare, we had other people come in and look at it. You know, we're also governed under union contracts. So we met with them, it was actually a large increase, we got a reduction of approximately 3.5%. But we reviewed it, and again, it's based on the claims that are made of usage. And again, a large percentage of retirees were older age.
Now, is a portion of that increase also, you know, additional employees? As you mentioned, we're having a higher number of retirees, obviously we're having new employees to come in, so is the overall pool bigger is what I'm understanding then contributing to the cost?
That's true, yes.
Okay, understood. And a question to, who's the current provider?
Luke Cross, the sheriff.
Luke Cross, the sheriff. And did we get any other quotes?
Actually, we would have cut the guy for a week, right? Yeah, we had other people come in and review it, see if there's other ways we could do it that would be cost beneficial to the city without taking a risk with the taxpayers.
Sure. Okay, understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to let you play.
Yes.
One more. Two. Dear Yvonne, Yvonne Lee, it's similar to what Frank had asked, and I, I'm basing on the numbers that were provided in the agenda. And it looks like that is a, you know, compared to the annual debt service totals from the prior bond service to the refinanced debt service, there's a $22.4 million increase. And I just, how is that saving the city money? And also there's a refinancing of the Series A bond goes from no interest to 15% interest. And that's what the coupon says. I know the mayor has said that the credit rating allows it to borrow money cheaply, but I, 15% interest seems quite high. And those are, those are my questions.
Eric Bryan, or?
Yeah, my little rating, whatever we say.
Jerry, don't mind him. Sure. But thank you.
That's the max, the higher we raise the terms.
Did we miss anyone else on pending legislation? I don't think we did. For these gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Flaherty, I'm with RBC Capital Markets. And Brian, this law, see if Stephen's in line. And I think maybe just we could have a very broad, start this at a very broad level just to, I think there's a certain amount of misunderstanding or misreading of what's before the council at the moment. What we're, what we're talking about here is the refunding of three transactions and doing that in what's called a parameters resolution. And in a parameters resolution, the council, the city through the council will be granting the authority to move forward with these refundings. And Brian, is there a, there's a requirement for savings?
There is a requirement for savings in the refunding ordinance.
So what the parameters does, and this is a function of the state law of the Local Government of Unit Debt Act or Leguda for shorthand. When you go in to get an approval from the Department of Community Economic Development, DCD, under the Leguda Act, you have to list by each year, the maximum amount of debt service and at the maximum rate of interest which would potentially be paid under that transaction. And because what we're trying to accomplish in the parameters is to allow the city the maximum amount of flexibility to do the most efficient transaction, by efficient I mean the lowest rate of interest. What the parameters does is it says, okay, within the requirement that there be savings, we're going to file, Brian as an individual would do it, would file these proceedings with the local government under the Local Government of Unit Debt Act. And then, once that approval is received from DCD, that allows the underwriter, which is PNC with my firm, us as the financial advisor, we are the independent advisor to the city, to examine the market and say, this is an opportune time to go into the market to achieve savings. This is a structure that's become incredibly common in the last, in the years following the financial press. And the reason for that is, most municipalities meet on the second and fourth Tuesday, whatever it may be. Traditionally, you would have a bond sale where the underwriter would go into the market in the morning and price bonds, and we would all come here on Tuesday night and say, these are the, these are the exact dollars in each year and the exact rates in each year. The problem is, there's so much volatility in the market at the moment, and has been for the last four, five, six years in the wake of the events in 2008, that on Tuesday morning, literally, there could be no savings. So we would postpone the sale. And the following Monday, there could be $200,000 worth of savings. But you'd have a meeting scheduled for that Monday night, so you can't take any action. And, and we had situations where, you know, in essence, it was like you're trying to catch a yo-yo as it was going up and down. So the parameters is something that allows the maximum flexibility to achieve the savings. One of the, I'll call a byproduct of that, is that you have to file with DCD a maximum schedule for each year and at each rate. Those numbers are, there's not a better way to say it, they're fluffed up a little bit in each year. So that the total amount of principal, if we're going to sell, well, the underwriters are going to sell $25 million of the bonds on behalf of the city, the total amount of principal in the parameters might be 29 million or 30 million. The reason for that is, DCD does not approve your filing on the basis of the total size of the bond transaction. It approves it on the amount that's due in every year. And what happens when you actually go to price into the market is, depending on what's going on, you have buyers that may prefer, you know, there's bonds due in 2019 and 2020. The underwriter may get an offer from somebody to say, well, jeez, I will be much more aggressive in my interest rate if I can have bonds that are maturing in early 2020 as opposed to 2019. Well, if we have that, if that schedule is down to the last dollar, there's no ability for the underwriter to move those bonds or to say, we can take advantage of that offer. Because if you deviate from the approved, the schedule approved by DCD, you have to go back and start the whole process again. So what has, what you're seeing attached to the resolutions that Brian prepared are principal numbers that reflect the fact that there's additional principal added into each year for the, for the purpose of allowing the flexibility to maybe move bonds into the most advantageous spot from year to year. In a perfect world, we would do that with a, you know, a 2%, we'd say, you know, it's 2% more. Unfortunately, we have to add something to every year, and that sort of makes the effect of an outside. Same with the maximum rate. There's a maximum rate in each instance that's required by the Local Government of Unit Debt Act. And the, that rate is again for each year. So if you look at the parameters as, the way I typically describe it is, that's a window. This is the most dollars at the highest rate. In order to achieve savings, you clearly could not do a transaction where you are adding 20 million, much less $2 million worth of debt service to the city's, so that the numbers will actually be sold and actually accepted by the city will be substantially smaller than the numbers that are included in the parameters. And that's a function of the way the Commonwealth makes the approval be submitted. The, the question, the next question I usually get is, well, aren't we writing a blind check if we set these big, these big numbers? And the answer to that is clearly no. And the reason for that is, part of what you're doing, Brian, I will sit here, feel free to hop in at any point here, part of what you're doing in the resolution is authorizing the parameters purchase contract, which has the same dollars and things with the underwriter. However, that contract has no legal, you know, does not bind you to sell any bonds until there's an addendum executed that shows the exact dollars and the exact rates. And based on that addendum, under the requirements of the resolution, there must be savings. So there cannot be, under the authorization that this resolution contemplates, a transaction undertaken that does not provide savings.
Now, is that per year or for the whole?
For the total, what, what, we, we look at savings, we would look at the total, total debt service over the life of the transaction. And that has to be lower than the previous total debt service. So you can't have a scenario where there's savings in one year, but you know, less, no savings in all the other years, and in total, there's no savings. It has to be in total, a transaction that has net savings to the city.
Is that including all costs associated?
Yes.
Including underwriting and that type of thing of that nature?
Every, every single cost, because the way all, all bond transactions work is, all the costs are inclusive in the borrowing, okay? So the debt service figures include all of the costs that are incurred. So when you compare the existing debt service to the new debt service, when the new debt service includes all the costs, there must be net savings comparing those two columns of numbers. And so yes, it takes into account every, every dollar that was, that of costs that were incurred to undertake the transaction.
And what do you perceive as timeframe compared to the current funds that we have issued to new bonds that you may be selling?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Councilman.
The timeframe, the amount of time that the bonds are in issue? With maturity?
Oh, are you talking about the, the maturity?
Yeah.
There are, there's actually three separate pieces, you know, three separate pieces to the transaction. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but the...
The D issue is the shortest one, and that goes out to, under these schedules, it goes to 2026. And I believe the other ones are about the same, but... 2036 is for the D of 15, so that's, I think that's the final maturity date, 2036 on that one. And the last one, the Series B one, or Series C one is 2027. So this, that's the, each one has a separate maturity date, and they go out to those periods under these schedules.
And they're, they're in different series because...
Different purposes.
Different purposes, and one of the series is a passable versus tax exempt. So there is not a way to put them all into one bucket and sell one series of bonds.
But one of the things that the Local Government of Unit Debt Act does require is that you look at your debt service overall whenever you do these filings. So the authorization for a particular issue can be in two forms. It could either be leveled debt service on its own, so that issue has to have level principal and interest payments for the life of that issue. Or what most people look at, because they have other debt outstanding, is level overall. So the thing we'll look at in one of the filings that we do is all of your debt service to make sure that on an annual basis for all your debt, you have leveled debt service payments or declining debt service payments over the life of your outstanding issues. So that's why the maturity dates, as you look at principal amounts, they kind of bounce around all over the place for different years, but that's because you're fitting those into your overall debt service. There may be a bond issue that has, you know, a lower debt service in one year, well, the refunding or the new issue that you do tries to fill in those pieces so that overall, once again, you have an approval that is a level for all your debt.
Gentlemen, for those of us that aren't financial people, I apologize, but these are questions that I just meant to ask anyway tonight. So what you're saying is, with the proposed new bond issue that you want approval for, it will not take place unless there's a savings based on RBC, on RBC for new issues? Is that correct for the city?
That, yes, that is correct.
Okay, the city will not be, be in a longer or in a higher financial than we are now, yet there will be a savings under the state. Otherwise, it won't take place, is that correct?
That's correct. And Brian's making one, their, the, the B series is, is a refinancing slash restructuring, there is not likely that actually, you know, there will not be net savings in all likelihood on that transaction.
Will there be increases incurred on that? Cost increases?
On an annual, no, on an annual basis, no.
At all?
In total, on a present value basis, there will be, and it's driven by market rates, but yet there may be some small increase in, is to that transaction.
And also just to kind of complete the procedural part of that, after the bonds are finally priced, what we do with the state, because the state is sitting there now with these authorizations at the higher amounts, what we do with the state is really just send them a secondary letter saying, here are the final debt service schedules, please update your records. That is a very easy process, and what they do is they'll take those new amortizations, load them into their schedules, update it so that their city records show the final pricing, and we'll do a non-completion of sale for whatever that principal amount was. So take, for example, the $31 million piece. If that issue ends up being 17 or 27 million dollars in total, we would do a non-completion of sale for $4 million. They take $4 million off your records and load in final amortization schedule. So they're only going to have what the final debt service is. And what that allows us to do, there's no advertising costs, there's no filing fee for that update. But as Stephen mentioned, as the markets were moving around and people were trying to match up their meeting dates, one of the things we have to do is put advertisements in the paper prior to your adoption. Those ads are, you know, $1500 a piece. As it got difficult to line those up, people were ending up duplicating those advertisements and filing fees. And this is a little bit more efficient in terms of you can do it once, you do ad before the ad after the filing fee with the state, you know that you're within those parameters, you only have to pay that once, and you just update the records with a letter of final pricing information. So it saves, saves the potential of having to replicate some of those costs.
You know, I just want to kind of clarify too, or add on to one thing Brian said, clarify something. The, when that non-completion occurs, when that filing with DCD, then the, that has the same debt effect as, as to the purchase contract. So those, the ability to ever issue those bonds goes away. So as it described before you, you're setting a wide window, we get the final version of that window, everything collapses down to that, and any of the, you know, the contract with PNC has those larger numbers in it. However, once that non-completion is filed, those bonds can never be issued because under state law, they're no longer approved to be issued. So I think that's an important, the, the, the larger amounts that set the parameters window go away for all purposes. State law, you know, books and records at DCD, and the ability to ever issue those bonds in the future upon that filing of the non-completion. So it really is like a, I would call sort of a total cleanup and a, a complete closure as to that issue. And I just want to say, you know, we are, we have looked at these transactions as a whole, you know, the three of them, and to my, to the question you asked earlier, Councilman, there is, if you look at the savings on a whole, there are savings, the transactions on a whole, rather, there are savings being generated as, as part of that.
Well, that's the little idea you had there.
Correct. It's broken apart because there are different purposes.
What you're telling us, gentlemen, if I'm not to misunderstand you, is there will be guaranteed savings by doing this, and secondly, there will be no additional indebtedness?
Well, you wouldn't, to be clear, yes, the transactions will not occur if there's not, if there will not be savings.
So there will be, the savings are no transaction at all?
That's, that's correct.
And no additional indebtedness by the city?
And also, well, and just to clarify, there, the amount of, the city is, is incurring a minor amount of additional debt because you are financing the costs of the transactions. To go back to your earlier question about, is savings calculated, including all the costs? The reason that I said yes, absolutely, is because we're, we're looking at pre-refunding debt service versus post-refunding debt service. And post-refunding debt service includes the costs. And the reason for that is, the costs are part of the transaction. So there is a, an increase in the principal, however, the total debt service goes down, and that's how you generate the savings. The, the way I usually express this, and I think the easiest, sort of simplest analogy for it is, it's like refunding your home mortgage. If you have 15 years left to run on your home mortgage at 4%, and you go in and get a loan at 3.5%, and you pay a little bit of closing costs, and now those go into the new loan, but your payments go from, I don't know what that would be, you know, say $1,000 a month to 900 a month for, for 15 years, you have achieved, say, you've saved $100 a month, notwithstanding the fact that you paid some closing costs. So just, I want to be clear about that, that there, if you look at the exact amount of debt prior to these, these transactions being undertaken and the exact amount after, the amount after will be slightly smaller only for the closing costs that are incurred.
But the closing costs, as we said, it still will be the benefit, because the saving will be much greater.
Exactly. Exactly. There, again, because you're including the closing costs in the calculation of debt service, there cannot be savings, you know, without...
What are the closing cost figures? Is it a percentage of what we're doing?
Well, there's various, there's different costs. There are, the way we refer to them typically is, there are fixed costs of issuance. An example of that would be the rating fee, okay? You pay, you pay a rating fee predominantly, there is a little bit of a change, the bigger the transaction is, it gets a little higher. But generally speaking, if you borrow 5 million or 20 million, the rating fee is, is virtually the same. Legal costs, we typically look at as a fixed cost, okay? There's printing costs with the marketing and disclosure documents, those are generally the same regardless. The variable costs that are costs of issuance are the, the underwriter's discount, which is the underwriter's fee for structuring and selling the bonds and paying their salespeople to, you know, to sell them on.
And is that based on a percentage of what we're doing?
It is.
And what is that percentage?
I, that's not part of my...
I think it's in the purchase contract, it's $7 per day.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, it's seven tenths of 1%. The other variable cost that is dependent on the size of the transaction is, is the bond insurance premium. And that's a function of a number of things, but one of them is the, the size of the transaction because the bond insurance premium is, is determined by how much they're insuring. Again, analogous to, if you have a $15,000 car, your car insurance premium generally is less than if you have a $50,000 car. And so that one changes by, by the size as well.
And is there a parameter as to the lowest and the highest?
Not for the bond insurance because the way we treat...
You mean if you go to 100% of the...
Oh, no, no, no. Because the, the reason for that is...
I have a parameter.
No, the reason for that is, we bid that out, okay? We go to, there used to be five or six bond insurers, there's now really only two that are operative. We go to both of them, they provide a bid absent of knowing what the other one is going to do. And that, that cost is, is basically considered to be interest in the transaction, so it is again factored into the annual total debt service. So again, whichever of... So, again, whichever of the two provides the lowest has run somewhere around three to four tenths of a, of a percent of, of the, you know, the insured amount. But that helps you achieve lower interest rates. And there's actually an IRS rule, Brian would not allow the transaction to move forward if we could not, with the, and the underwriter actually certifies to this, that paying that premium got you a low, a lower, a lower interest rate at least equal to or exceeding the amount of the premium. So it has to be a, a net positive to the city for the insurance to be applied under the tax laws.
And how much savings do you think the city is going to realize from this?
At current market rates, and, and understanding that, you know, we're sitting here on November 6th, and there's probably, Brian, between the next, you know, advertising, everything that happens, I think the earliest we could, you know, could be in the market would be the early, early part of 15, you know, the first, I don't know, the couple, first couple of weeks of, of January. So there's some room for, for fluctuation there. We're estimating that the savings at current market rates are, are at least $350,000.
What rate do you use it?
I'm sorry?
What's the percentage rate you use it to get that saving? Because according to this, you're at 6%, 15%?
Well, again, that's, that's for the purposes of the parameters.
That's what I'm asking, what are you using for your calculation?
Watching rates at the rate.
Yeah, the, the, those, there's a, the way the transactions get priced is that each maturity, that is each year, so when you sell a bond transaction, you're not selling one giant payment at the end.
Right, if you calculate 10 months, you have a 1.35 to 2.7.
Right.
So what are your calculations for that 2010?
At the current, at current market rates, the front end of the curve, which is 2015, is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 0.6%. And as you move out from there, and now we're going all the, all the way.
We're going 30?
30.
20?
Yes, you're, you're probably.
3.5 to 4?
Yeah, I was going to say, you're, you're in the, in the middle, uh, middle threes to about 4%.
The greater end is higher.
Well, yeah, that's the natural, the interest curve.
And, now, correct me if I'm wrong, your loan is based on interest on the principal.
I'm sorry?
The loan is based on, the amount of loan, the outcome of the amount of loan is based on the interest on the principal.
Well, no, the dollar value is just straight principal. The total debt service is, is the combination of two.
So if you're not paying the principal, your interest rate is a lot higher because you're not paying the principal. Because when I pay off my mortgage, I paid it early to pay the principal down, so I don't have to pay the interest. So if we're taking loans, in the first five years, we're not paying any principal, we're paying interest on, say, $31 million at 6%, which puts about $180,000 to $200,000 a year. If you times that by four, that's $800,000 if you just don't have standard.
Yeah, no, each, each loan has to, that's a function of the state law that.
Right, and if we're not paying principal, our interest rate's a lot higher.
No, you, you have to pay principal.
$5,000 on a $31 million loan isn't much principal.
Yeah, no, $5,000 would not be a lot, but if you, if you look at the, again, the schedules, two, two points.
To make it.
Some of them are wrong.
But then why in 2019 to 2023, we're paying $10, $10 million a year on the bond principal and the interest, and next year we're paying about three or four. Is that equal $3 million to $10 million?
No, that, that actually can't be the case.
Well, that was in the financial audit from last year.
When we filed, well, when we filed the paperwork with the state, yeah. Every, one of the requirements is you start to amortize your issue within two years. So you're right, there can be, in the beginning part, less debt service until a little, a little too. But overall, once again, you can't have a filing that has, you know, $3 million, you know, five years from now, and $10 million, you know.
But you're having a new amortization.
So it really is.
Does that just read your amortization for, for the one loan? How much you pay this year and how much you pay the, the last year?
And remember, there's, there's other debt service that you have outstanding that drops off and goes away and fills in your overall debt service.
Well, let's go to the year, say, 2020, where we're paying $10 million a year. Your amortization is 4.24 million, this year it's 1.1 million. So that doesn't make any sense to me.
Can I ask?
This is your figure, not mine.
No, I understand, but I'm just not sure what, I'm just not sure what paper you're looking at.
This is Series C of 2015.
And that's, because that's just that one issue.
You want me to go to another issue? I did, I went with the, the financial report we just got. And it had, in 2019, 2023, we owe $41 million.
Yeah, no, you, you're looking at an individual, in order to, again, the requirement is you're level to declining debt service on an overall basis.
Right, I understand, but it's not level across the board like you're saying it is.
It is in total. If you look at.
Well, it's going to the financial audit. I mean, they, they, they made the, I didn't, I didn't do the audit, so let me go back and read it. 2014, our total payments was $5 million, but we're decreasing that because we're not paying on the, some of these, the series 2005, 10, and 7, because we're extending them later on down the road. 2015 is 7, 7 million, which is the same thing. That's not accurate now because we're refinancing somebody's loans. 2016 is 8, 2018 is 8, 2019 is 2020, 2023 is $41 million, 2024 to 2028 is $19 million, 2009, 2029 to 33 is $1.5 million, and the last 234, because there's only part of the loan left, is $800,000. I mean, that's not equal. I, I mean, for my side, I don't, I don't know. Well, I got this from, this, the, the financial thing from December 31st, July 32nd.
And all I'm saying is, one of the things that we do have to file with the state, it's a schedule that RBC puts together that has all of your, all of your debt service listed out for each of your issues and columns. And the total column for the 10 issues that may be outstanding, or 12 issues, show level debt service over the life of all of that debt. It doesn't bounce around like that, or I wouldn't get approval from the state. They won't approve that.
You get most of the refinancing. I mean, this was done when you did some pre-finances already, so you already did these. This is a new one. These are mostly yours too.
But all I'm saying, all I'm saying is, I could, if that's exactly what the schedule showed that I sent to the state, they won't approve it. I have to show them level debt service through the life of the deal or declining, which is what the schedule shows.
Well, this is the audit. I didn't do the audit.
And I just, I don't know.
And if I heard you correctly, I think what's, the audit is doing, and this is unusual, is there's, there's, they're blocking periods of years.
Doing term bonds.
Right, if it's not four years, it's $41 million. If it's $20 million in one year, 18 in the next year, and in two, two, it's still not equal across the board.
And that's a good point. They're showing blocks of term bonds that. One of the pricing features, and I'll let Stephen go through it, you either have serial bonds that mature in that year, or there's another financial product that's a term bond. And a term bond is really nothing more than a bond that matures, say, five years from now. That holder has that bond knowing it doesn't mature for five years. What state law requires and what the bond documents require for that is within that five-year period, and each year, it amortizes principal. So he doesn't know, and that block of term bonds is sold. None of those holders know, well, will I get paid out in year one, will I get paid out in year two? So the term bond has that large maturity, but the debt service for the city has annual debt service associated with that, which levels out those payments. And I'm guessing, because they don't see that, but that would be why that would be reflected that way.
Brian, if that comes from the annual financial statement, they also, in later years, in financial statements, combine years. They could have, there's 22 through 26.
That was what I thought on five.
Well, they could do that, but if the bulk is in those four years, one of those years isn't equal to everybody else, because it's $41 million in four years, and every other year is $5 million in second.
They may have combined years in the financial.
They must have, because it, it has to be level.
When you, when you say, at the end of the year, it's like 30, $44 million or $33 million, is that accounting the bond payments we have to pay for the people who bought the bonds, their interest? Because everybody who buys the bond wants 6% or 5% back. Now, when we do this amortization, is that included in the, in the refunds?
Your debt service that you're paying is principal and interest to your bondholders. It includes.
And the industry paid you, to the bank?
Well, no, there's only, there's only, there's only interest paid to the bondholders. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at a schedule that we ran in April that shows the aggregate in, I wish I had my reading glasses with me because the print is very small. But what it shows is that, that for the periods ending 12, 1, and 14 going forward, that the aggregate debt service is roughly 8.7 to 8 million a year from 2015 through 2021. And then it goes down to about 7.7 for the following three years. Then it goes down to about 6.9 in, I think that's 2025.
Which one is this? Which?
This is all, all the, all the city's bond issues.
Boy, there's a big discrepancy with the math in the, in the audit we got then.
It, it sounds like they're just lumping those later years together instead of listing it all out.
And you talk about level debt service, and that's probably the, again, I'm a layman who comes to this as well, but one of the goals for the city is just that, level debt service throughout.
It allows you to budget efficiently, rather than having all examples.
And this will provide level debt service through the terms of these bonds.
Right, for the, for the totality of the city's debt, yes.
And actually, actually, what happens, it's level or declining, so when you start to look at the later years of your debt service, it's starting to come off as a bunch of your issues pay off.
But right now, we do not have that obvious, I don't regret to know that. We're not always, we're.
And, and, to, to be clear, the state's definition of level to declining allows for minor deviations, you know, you could go from 8.8 to 8.6 to 8.5 million, but they do not allow you to go from, you know, 8 million to 20 million, back down to 4 million or something like that. For the very reasons that you mentioned, you can't budget. And then the other reason it needs to be either level or declining is they will not allow a current council or borough authority or anything like that to obligate a future for what would be in essence a balloon man. You know, you can't stick somebody down the road with double the debt service level that, that you have, uh, currently.
Explain that to me, because I'm, I'm reading your, again, Series C thing. This year, well, 2015, you have $1 million. In 2027, you have six, almost 6.4 million. I mean, that's, they don't look, they don't equal.
Because you're looking at only the one bond transaction. Any, if you think of, if you, if you think of it this way, you have, the city has.
Okay, well, let's go back to Series B.
Now, again, you, you're looking at, you have information on three of the series.
Well, I gave you the information on the total, and you said that's a bunch of bull.
I didn't say, I didn't, I didn't say it was a bunch of bull.
I had that out when you were telling.
If, if I could, can I come around?
No, because I want to, I want to make sure that we're on the same page here.
And I'm going to apologize for the small print, I barely read it myself. But if you look, this list, this is the, each of the city's existing bond transactions, okay? And this is the debt service, principal and interest, do on each one, okay? Now, if you, each one of them, you can see, they're moving, you know, some of them are level. This one's pretty much exactly the same each year. But this one starts small and gets bigger. This one is bigger then gets smaller. This one's smaller then gets bigger. But if you look over here in the total column, you'll see that it's, it's 8, 8, 8, 8, 8, 7, 7, 6, 1, and then some real small, you know, small numbers there as a tail sum.
This one, we have gig, we're going to take off $4 million. That's only $4 million. This one, we're taking off $5 million, so that's only $3 million. Then in 2017, then it starts going to equal.
And I'm not 100% sure where you're, where you're referencing the $4 million and the $5 million.
His, his payment for these bonds, your requirement is 0 in 2014, you budget 0 in 2015.
Well, that's a budget figure. I can't speak to.
Well, that's what we, that's what we have to speak to, the budget.
To the budget figure, but as to the issue of, you know, whether there is level debt, as Brian's pointed out, the state will not allow you to do anything other than that. And, and if, again, you look at the totality of all the columns, and you look at the sum figures, you have relative declining debt service.
And this is the schedule that I was referring to, that is really just a list of your debt side by side, showing the total. And they ask for that so they can do that analysis as a state element.
What is the financial advisor's fee?
Any other questions, specific questions on this from council?
What is the financial advisor's fee?
Thank you.
For the, all of the transactions? I'm not sure that we've, you have to forgive me, I'm pinch hitting for a colleague of mine this evening who's normally here. Brian, is it someone on the?
It's, it's, I don't know.
Okay. The, the, the figure that, that I had heard, and I'm embarrassed if you could confirm or refute it, in speaking to my colleague Lou Verdelio, I think you've all seen here a few times, was that the financial advisor's fee was $75,000 for all of the three transactions?
It's also for financial advice throughout the year.
Right.
S and P calls and.
Right, unlike, the, the underwriter gets paid.
That's a total save.
So $75,000 is what we pay the financial advisor for everything, no matter what he does? There's not an additional charge for this?
No, based on, he assists us throughout the year, he's posted in the market.
But are you saying, or correct me? What are savings are at $335,000?
Like, that includes the.
Yeah, again, all of the costs are included in the, the figures that turn out, that have to reveal the calculation savings.
Okay, and this $335,000 savings will be over the full term of the bonds?
There's, there's two ways in which you can do that. Because of something that Brian mentioned earlier, the state will allow you in the first year to, to take that savings by reducing your payment in the one year, or you can have, take it ratably or levelly over the whole transaction, life of the transaction. Most issuers take it in the first year because it has the most, to, to, not to use a pun, but it's the most bang for your buck to get a lump sum payment as opposed to getting a, a smaller amount over a span of years.
Any other questions on the bond issues that I've been working on?
No, I think the key issue that the gentleman brought up, if I'm not mistaken, is no increasing indebtedness, guarantee savings, otherwise we don't go through with the bond. Correct that, would you?
That, that is correct, yes.
As, as we talked about, we're looking at it as the three issues.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, now we move into the formal business of council. First is a set agenda on resolutions.
Good evening, again, Frank Swirke. As I sat back there watching in court, as many of you, although one of you voted to, I, I have no other words other than voted like bottleheads to pass whatever the mayor shoved down your throat. I, I don't get it. I, I often wonder, you know, for, for years, I watched a certain city tower come here and rip into you people and call you despicable names, and swore I would never do it. Today, I'm breaking my own word. You are bottleheads. I, I have nothing else to say. I have nothing else to say. I just, I look at this and I say, anyone looking at the amortization schedule of 0% interest jumping to 15% interest, and you listen to people who are going to earn a commission on the sale of these bonds tell you, we're going to realize savings. If I came to your home and you said, Frank, I owe $100,000 on my mortgage, and I have 15 years left on it, and I said, Mrs. Lavelle, I will sell you a mortgage for the same $100,000 over the next 30 years, and I will waive your interest or your principal payments for the first five years. Obviously, that first five years, as Mr. George pointed out, are going to be built into the next 30 years. We're buying these bonds at another three years. The savings we're realizing are on the football we hunted for three years. That's it. We are, you guys just sold us $22.4 million in new debt that we didn't have yesterday that we now have today. And I'm telling you, you signed a late check for the mayor. He has never been truthful to you guys. You watched him steal gas, you saw billboards go up, because he did nothing. You continue to do nothing. And you continue to bobble your little heads, like the three bobbleheads of the Pep Boys. You guys do it. I don't get it. I just don't get it. And Mr. Brown, you're my councilman. I am so disgusted with you, it's not funny. I couldn't care less about floodwater these days because we're being taxed out of our homes by you guys. You don't even care. You're worried about whether or not I flood in Solomon Street? I welcome the water. I mean, Mike walked away with the state that you guys passed on us. I don't get it. I just don't get it anymore. I am beyond words. I can only thank Councilman George for, again, standing up for the taxpayers of this city as you have continuously done. And I congratulate Mr. Vinso on his new job with Mayor, I'm sorry, Governor Wolf's office. I wish you the very best down in Harrisburg. I hope you do well. I hope you don't look back on Wolf's Park and say, I miss that place, because I'm sure Harrisburg will treat you well. Thank you very much for your service, Mr. Vinso. You will be missed.
I have no idea what you're talking about. I appreciate it.
No, no, maybe you haven't received a letter of intent yet, but you're headed to Harrisburg. And you're telling the Governor Wolf who sat in your home hasn't helped you up and offered you that job yet, to your knowledge.
I don't know who you're talking to.
Governor Wolf is ever in your home?
He's my home, yeah. I don't have any job.
Well, we'll see how that one pans out. Just like the mayor's interest rate, that never seems to materialize and is always going to save us money and continue us to get screwed, but that's another story. Again, I do not know how you guys continuously pass things and believe in this guy who has lied to you so many times. And I know most of you, I know you have a good heart, but you continue to just buy into what he's selling you, and it's never been right. Thank you.
Good evening again, Council. Thanks for having me here. I want to take a little aside here and say that I do really appreciate the length of discussion and the thought that was put into the decision that was made earlier, Mr. George, and Mrs. Lavelle especially had some pretty on point questions, and I really do appreciate that. I want to go back to something that I talked about my first time here in the council. And you guys have had a lot on your plate lately between the Martin Luther King holiday and clearly this monstrous, you know, 2015 budget slash bonds combo. So you guys have had a full plate, and I understand that. I sent some emails to all the council members except for Mr. Merrick. I couldn't find your email address online. But some briefs on some websites that I found regarding the implementation of police lapels, the benefits that they provide, some grants that would be available to the city if they chose to pursue that course of action, as well as some success stories and different communities that were enacting similar legislation. I didn't receive, or hear response to that from anyone but from Councilman Barrett, which very much appreciate that email back. And I want to take a moment to read that here. It says, "Good morning, Matthew. I'm sure that few would disagree with the importance of the value of body worn cameras for law enforcement. I'm certain they will become as common as other law enforcement safety equipment in the not too distant future, and a brief that city should begin to research what would be the best options. I'm certain that organizations such as the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police, PSP, Pennsylvania State Police, and others are looking into this as well. Ideally, there would be standards set to their purchase, use, and policies. Thank you for your interest in this very most important issue. Bill Barrett, Chairperson, with respect to the council." Being that you are in agreement, and you guys have had, like I said, a lot of things on your table, is it possible that we can get a commitment from council to discuss this amongst yourselves over the next two months and maybe follow up with this come January or the start of the new year with some sort of plan of action, how we may be able to implement this?
Is that your total percentage?
Yes, sir. No, that's fine.
It's obvious from my response to you that I am supportive of this. However, as I mentioned, organizations that I referenced are continuing their research and there's some reality, and we start dealing with audios and things like that. And so a lot of things. I think that you will see them in, during your future and you're starting to look for across the state. Right now, those aren't an obvious question or issue. Less obvious ones are human issues and those types of things as well. But I think the advantages are, the disadvantages, I don't know, perhaps, help. Started with the protection of patients, so. But I think that Mr. Merrick's email address is on, whatever you send to me, I'll make sure that it goes. I think that's the best way to stay in touch and follow this.
Sure. Now, do we have point of contact that, in those organizations, for just following up on this issue?
I will forward information to you.
We've always been all of the state, too, so they have the money to do the research.
Mr. Kees, Office of Education and Training Commission is also involved in that as well. And they have some standards.
We just try to follow along.
Certainly, certainly. Well, I appreciate your concern and the matter, and I'll be back in January and just see, hopefully you guys will have an update on what, you know, what they are, at least will be out of sync.
Send us another reminder.
Sure. Thank you.
Don't their faces look familiar? They were just here two weeks ago.
No, four weeks.
Joe Walsh, 34th layer, two block front. I can tell by the expression on their faces, they're thrilled to see me again. Let's see if we can bring a little smile on their faces and then get to the serious portion of my remarks. A definition of both. It's a niche feeling in your heart that you can't scratch. Psychiatrists say girls tend to marry men like their fathers. Now we know why mothers cry at weddings. The penalty for bigamming is to mother-in-laws. One reason so many children are seen on the streets at night is that they're afraid to stay home alone. Yesterday was such a bad day, even my twin brother forgot my birthday. The man of the hour is the one whose wife asked him to wait a minute. Genuine happiness is when a wife sees a double chin on her husband's ex-girlfriend. A second wind is what some politicians get when they say, and now it's a conclusion. God gave each of us two ends, one to sit on and one to think with. A person's success or failure depends on the one he uses the most. Okay, now let's get serious. Since the United States American Flag Fund was established, we have distributed 500 American flags to all of Wilkes-Barre City, Kingston, and to individuals. It is continued in the flag fund to recognize the sacrifices of our veterans and military and to honor those sacrifices for holding the spray of our nation's flag, not only on Veterans Day, but all patriotic observances. I feel strongly we have made progress in that direction. The question I ask Mayor Mayton, when he's not here, and members of council, why little or nothing has come forth from the city of Wilkes-Barre regarding the display of our nation's flag? A question's never been answered. For 10 years prior to 2013, flags have not graced the city of the Wilkes-Barre city streets and businesses. I have not seen or read any encouragement from city officials toward the display of our nation's flag to honor the sacrifice by so many. The parade route on Memorial Day in Kingston has been almost void of any flags and then pulls through to Market Street and Kingston and West Market Street and Public Square on Veterans Day. Why? When the flags were displayed last year, it took once to do it. By comparison, the Christmas lights at Public Square will go up in a few days. In so doing, you're diminishing the honor to our veterans and military and Thanksgiving by reducing the importance of these days, including the absence at the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, December 7th. This year, watch the 70th anniversary, and it won't be too long before we'll be recognized in that day. This past week, the United States Flag Committee delivered and presented three by five American flags to every business establishment on Market Street, Kingston, West Market Street, Wilkes-Barre, and around Public Square. Everyone accepted the flags graciously and promised to display on Veterans Day and future observances. At Tuesday's rolling mill hill crime watch group meeting, each person was given a large American flag, followed by joining and singing, "God Bless America." I hope and pray the weather will be nice for the veterans' parade, and more people will make smaller effort and sacrifice to attend. Look at the sacrifice of our men, who made it possible that flag was still waving. Last year's attendance was sparse, although the news media wrote otherwise. I believe the news media is lax in promoting the parade and its meaning. I've approached the TV stations past years asking them to urge people to display our flag and attend the parade. They have failed miserably. At this point in time, what I'll say is, God help our nation. We're in serious trouble, make no mistake about it. Thank you.
We'll see you on Sunday.
What's that?
We'll see you on Sunday over good weather. Pray, we'll see you at the parade.
Am I going to be in the parade?
We will see you at the parade.
I hope so, and I hope more people. But the question is this, that I raised here. Why don't we see any encouragement coming from the city community, the city hall, and the mayor? I don't see anything. There's no official announcement. I don't like to mean a proclamation. That's too formal. Why isn't there an appeal to the people?
Right, it's on Facebook.
Yes, President, I've seen it.
What's that?
The announcement's on the Facebook website.
There's nothing. I don't see it.
A lot of people don't have Facebook. A lot of people, you know, put it in the newspaper instead of, they're on page 30.
Use all of them. Use all of them.
Sorry, I'm a veteran.
Communication. Don't restrict it to one or two things.
No, the press releases are, I know you just...
I'm tired.
Put it on 28, put it on 16.
It's not excuses.
It's nothing but a, it's nothing but a display of indifference, and I don't care how to do. That's why it's doesn't done.
Look at what's Caraton does.
Mr. Walsh, thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Burton?
Yes. Good evening. Before I get started, Phil, thank you for mentioning Billy Pachinsky at the beginning of the meeting. I was going to do that first. Okay, my name's James Burton, 58 Taff Street, Wilkes-Barre. My first thing, before I get started, this goes out to Bill Barrett. I've got one question for you. Bill, every week I come here, you, as soon as five minutes hits for me. Everybody else here, you let go beyond five minutes. You let them go six, seven, eight minutes without smacking your gavel. I want to know why every time I'm here. You show prejudice towards me? Why? Because I was in the Marine Corps and you wasn't? Or I know you were in the Army, but every time I'm up on here, you banged me? Why? Because I'm going to run for council? Is that why I get banged every time my five minutes, as soon as I hit five minutes? Jim, your time's up. I want to know why. Everybody else can come up here for over five minutes and you don't chase them. But me, you chase. Okay. Now, you want to answer that before I start?
I'll answer it.
Okay. Now, first thing on my agenda is the playgrounds. The city is so much in this budget thing. We're remodeling playgrounds. Okay, these playgrounds that we're remodeling are going to be drug use in places, right? People are going to come there at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, and they sit there, do their drugs. Why don't we put fences up there high enough and gates on them and let them get locked up at sundown and opened up at sundays, right? Okay, that's one thing. 57 Taff Street, organs stop coming there, okay? I go out and get my paper in the morning, 5:30, raccoons are running across the street, skunks are running across the street right into that property again. I seen the guy when they were coming through, and I said to them, I says, why'd they take the traps? They said, ask the city, okay? Well, I'm asking the city, right? Okay, next thing I'm going to do is either go out there with my phone or I'm going to go out there with my pistol, right? Okay, I asked about crosswalks, okay, around the schools, to have them painted. Cars are going right into the middle of the crosswalks, they're not stopping. They try to cross these kids, okay? See about having them painted, please? Okay. We got a grant. I stood with the mayor and Drew McGlocken in that back room. I brought up for grant money was my idea for improvement of the city when you come in at all directions. And I asked, what can we do about these deplorable houses when we're coming in? And Tom and Drew says to me, we'll talk about it, right back there. And they got a grant. Where'd that grant money go for these houses coming in? Yeah, you know that we got a piece of, we got a grant money for them. Okay, where did all that grant money go? Where is it going to go for gas or where did it go? Where'd that money go? Because none of that house has got fixed up, I guarantee you, right? So I'd like to know where that money went. Okay. They come around, it's two weeks. They did all these recyclings, right? All the aluminum and everything. Where does that money go? Recyclable money go? I'd like to know where that goes, right? Last week, they just had the inspection over at Sherman Hills, right? The HUD came in and everybody, you were there, George, you were there on that inspection again last week. What happened with that inspection?
I was there last week.
Okay, when they came to for inspection, anybody know what happened on it? Anybody know what happened on it? You guys get any reports on that?
No.
Okay, how about the on finding them? Did anybody look into that, about finding them for not following through on their security systems and everything that you were supposed to do? Okay, and then last but not least, on 10/24, I called 911 twice. My driveway was blocked in. It took Wilkes-Barre Police over an hour and a half to come to my house. I had my driveway blocked in, cars were parked right across the street where it was, where it said. No parking on that garage, no parking. My driveway was parked in, there was an emergency over my mother-in-law's house. My wife could not get out of my driveway. The cop came, I pulled up. As soon as, when I got there, the policeman came. And I says to him, what are you going to do? And he goes, I says, he's in four violations here. I says, he's got my driveway blocked, he's parked in front of this garage, he's not doing anything. Right? He says, well, what do you want me to do? I says, have him towed. He said, I'm not going to have him towed for this. And what did he do? He drove off, right? He grabbed the license plate, one, the car was in 426, 428, East... four-twenty-eight, East North Ave Street, and a numb drug house, right? The car was registered to a house on Franklin Street, because he ran the license plate, because I heard it went across his radio, and he did nothing. Drove away. He stolen his job? No. Guess what?
Jim, I'm gonna stop you. I'm not gonna just be out all this time, I'm gonna get back to you. We, we, you brought up several issues, but I, I'm appalled that you would think that I would hold anything to you, first of all, because you're a military person, as we all are here. And actually, that's totally the opposite of the truth, and we've spoken outside of this road here about our military experience, so, believe me, and it's not because you might be considering running for public office, I commend you for doing that. The reason why some presentations go a little bit longer, and you've been here many meetings, is sometimes we're in a very sensitive area, sometimes things, and it's my discretion to need to be a little bit further addressed. Some are not quite as simple as some of the other ones may be, whether a blocked driveway wasn't addressed or, not that that's not a serious issue, which we'll deal with, but sometimes we get very deep into some conversation about some very sensitive issues, and, and we just feel that maybe we need a little bit more input from the public on those matters. Rest assured that, you know, we walked out here, shake hands, end of the night, that's not gonna change. So, I, all the respect for, you know, the very people, yourself, and Rain, and regardless of what grants and services we serve, and so I, I just wanted to clarify that point. I, I, I know that, because we've talked about painting lines and crosswalks, and, and I know that there is some work being done, although I've seen some work being done, although I don't know how well we're doing, which is how far we've gotten to set a line on roadways and those types of things, and I know that it's still continuing to do them right now. I've noticed several of them. The facade grant, very successful facade grant.
The facility was already completed, phase two started in 2015.
And that's what you're talking about, those homes, the entrance ways into cities, and you're right, they do need to be, those are very important, because in the city, they see dilapidated buildings, and I know that there's a, a quite a bit of money that was spent.
Facade, you, program is not used to take down homes.
No.
And it's first done, first served, so you have to fight real quick.
I think I put you on certain roadways, and, and we're taking more roadways as we build, ensure next phase. The program, I know you discussed it, you mentioned it, I'm looking forward to make the next phase two, maybe we can put some more streets out.
What is, they're fixing streets, was it?
No, no.
Front of hours.
It's a five thousand dollar grant that, fifty, resident puts in five thousand, the city matches it to the facade program, but there are no monies available for 2014, so we're applying for 2015, but it's a match of up to five thousand dollars.
You drive, you drive up East North Ave Street, and you look at some, and you look at a lot of the places up there on East North Ave Street, and none of them have been touched.
Yeah.
Oh, are you driving on Hazel Street?
Again, that's against the law. Line, the owner, he has to apply for it.
All right. I don't want that, I don't want that applied for it, and she got turned back.
The last thing on Sherman Hills is there were fines, actually, we are, due, I believe, with them over, some of the fines were lifted by our inspectors, they, they, I'm not quite sure where that actually stands now, but there have been fines lifted against owners of Sherman Hills code violations, so, significant fines, so, I don't know if you can count them, but they're appealing them, fine, fine.
And Oregon. As far as the playgrounds are concerned, they need to get fixed. Okay, these need a place to play. I, I do get it about the drugs, I do get it about people violating curfew, but that's a separate issue, and the police need to enforce that. I'm all for them taking drug dogs through a playground, get the people out of there so your kids could be safe.
Right, that's what I asked about being locked up at sundown, you know, where they, where they can't get in there.
All the police need to look, all the police need to do is go by and look in, they need to be able to see him, so the streets are being cut, so they can see if there's anybody in there after hours, inside, and get them out.
Yeah, because they're, they're, they're there on Cole Street, they're there on Cole Street, you drive up Cole Street, they're in that basketball court, sitting out there, and, you know, you go, I go down to the hockey rink, and you're driving out there, and they're sitting there, and, you know, they're, they're right there in Cole Street.
I agree, but it's a police issue, we need to be more concerned.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Roger Berthby?
Cole Street's a possible wash.
Yes, Roger, there's a brand selling complaints. I just wanted to, I was here six, seven months ago, to ask you people about the towing situation, about, and Tom was here, the mayor, and Tom said, yeah, just so we, if a customer of ours calls us, just so you're here at a respectable time, I said, I understand that time, I've been doing this too long, and I said, you know, I understand it, and we said, all right. So, I mean, six-twenty-six, fourteen, a customer called us, and I don't know, like you say, I was entitled to my rights to make a living, or just beat out of the job, but, I think it was just the officer that was the problem there. I mean, I'll tell you what happened. Lionberry called us to come get a trailer, like they did for the last forty-two years that we did work for Lionberry. I mean, there's some cases, they come out, and they drop them right across Penn Ave, and this one was across Penn Ave. I was there, I mean, I came, we got the call, I came down there, and I saw that your city tow was behind you, and when I got to the scene, I told the man from, represented from Gibbons Brewery, Lions, I said, I think we're gonna have a problem, I said, because they called their boy to come and do the job, and he said, no, I told him you're coming. And he said, what? At that time, I didn't know that he spoke to the officer, that we were, you know, what's going on, but he goes, he said, you were here first, right? Just go, I had to go around the building, I backed up to the trailer, because it's, you know, laying on the ground one side, they, they get nervous, they think it's gonna tip over, because there's, you know, twenty-seven ton in it, and I backed up to it, ready to get out of the truck, and one of the officers ran over to me and said, you, you gotta move. I said, why? He says, I'm having fellows all do this job. And I said, why is that? He said, because I, you know, I like, ask questions, the voice got louder, you know, like, I was dealing with Bob Calabas or somebody, you know, he says, anyways, he said, he says, no, we're having fellows all do, and I said, why? He said, because I called them. And I said, oh. I said, Lionberry is our customer, and they called us. I don't care, you want to move your truck? And I said, no, I tried to finish to say no, because I want to know why I have to move, and he says, show me your driver's license if you have one. So, I didn't want to get started, because God forbid, I just don't want a problem. Like I said, that's why I came to the meeting before this incident, what happened, I knew it, because I had told you, as far, I think I said at the last meeting, I think you went from the pan to the fire, as far as tow was concerned, because someone that thinks they should own the whole valley, and it's pretty sad. I mean, I think when the customer calls you, and like, I was told, yes, you do have the right, they get called and do the job. So, at that point, I just pulled my truck up, and it got off the road, and I went back to, there was four people with the hard hats on from Gibbons, the bosses, and I told, I says, we're getting beat out of the job, and I think you're gonna get beat too, and it did happen. So, should I, I mean, I like what I heard, I heard the tail end of the new chief when he was sworn in, I liked what he said, when he said that, you know, just, I always tell my kids the same thing about things, but he, anyway, the chief said that just because we may have one or two bad apples, or two bad people in force, this is a good police force, the Wilkes-Barre, and I believe it, because I had no problem for forty years with the city of Wilkes-Barre. I mean, we had a good relationship and no problem, to thank you, not chase you out of there. So, I don't know, should I go to, I just want your opinion, just want to tell you what happened, because God forbid, if, if I did hold my ground there and didn't walk away, like, I think we would have had a problem there, so that's why I just want to know.
Well, I recommend you get Gibbons, who called you, and make an appointment to the chief, and tell him what happened.
Well, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, I would do that, because if you don't do that, he doesn't know what happened.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so I go with the chief, because I mean, uh, I have those, there are copies of, I mean, this, like, I have a thing when it was in the paper that, you know, what the official, you know, like, when it said the official tow dollars for tow job, double of what it was supposed to be.
I think you should have a reading of the mayor.
Before, Mr. Brown, Mr. Deversky, will you do that before we start? Everybody's.
Well, I mean, I just, I'm very much, you know, I just wanted to know.
I didn't have anything else on there before.
No, that's, I mean, it's just that I say that there's a lot of work that's going on, I mean, the price is double of what it was said it's going to be. So, I mean, I, that's why I want to know, I mean, you have a new chief, so should I sit down with, like, Mr. George said, with the chief?
Well, that's what, that's what the contract says, the claim has to be through the, through the chief.
Through the police.
I, I've been trying to get a new contract out for three years now, and the mayor said he'll do it when he's ready.
What, as far as the tow?
As far as the towing contract.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
I said, I don't know.
Who do I ever know, well, you saw the mayor of Magory, when he was the mayor, but like he said, he said, you just want a towing company to pay you a stipend to do the towing. He said, who's gonna get beat out of it? He said, the consumer, person paying the bill, and it is happening. Because I mean, I, we do work for Plains Township, and in other companies I know that do it for local municipalities, and out of town, and it's true to the whole state.
Mr. Deversky, what I would do is I would, as, I can't call the chief, Mr. George mentioned, I, I think you should set an appointment, just introduce yourself to the chief, and I didn't know that concern that you had, but it doesn't appear to turn, right? I believe you.
But, it's like I told my podcast.
The other thing is, I, an owner of a property, of any kind of property, has a right to choose who he wants to do the job.
Well, see, you, okay, it was on, it was on the street, it was across the street, but we were there first.
But he still should have the right.
Right, but when I.
Actually, I agree with you. Actually, anybody who's being towed has a right, as long as they.
Yes, they're, they're, am I correct, they're supposed to be asked, do you have a preference? And I know in our town, I mean, they, they ask, do you have a triple A, or, or anything of that?
Well, that is the policy.
Yeah, that should be the policy. See, the thing is, you know, as I said, and I told my kids, when you have a kind of strawberry in the refrigerator, if there's one bad one, you don't throw the whole thing away, get rid of the bad one, I think you have one or a couple of bad people in here tomorrow.
You have to give the chief a chance.
Well, that's what I said, he sounded good, but.
Mr. George, bring him back.
Yeah. So, I'll sit.
Yes, I would call the chief's office and make an appointment, introduce yourself to the Wilkes-Barre, so we don't have this problem.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Lina, we have a feature forum for you on, I hope you covered the issue that you wanted.
Well, the only question I have, I don't know. Sure. It was, it was, hey, stuff by the, by the council there, but, the bond council and the others, but, did council members actually read the ordinance there in detail, and did you understand what they were saying tonight? Because they said a lot, and it was confusing, and, um, just wondering if you.
I know what I do.
I mean, apparently they said, so I thought it was because of the vote, but it, it just seems like, uh, it was a lot, and, uh, the savings could be realized in, in the first year, and they could be coming, the mayor, or whoever it is, because he's coming back in a couple of years to refinance it again, and it seems like the, you know, the charity day would, would, could extend, so, I'm just, I'm just wondering if everybody actually read the ordinance and understood what, what was presented tonight, because it's, it's confusing.
Actually, the two thousand five bond that we refinanced was refinanced in nineteen ninety-eight, so that bond is, what, twenty-five years old, and keeps being refinanced.
I won't be able to get you all afterwards, but that was probably a lot of discussion on, so.
Thank you. Angel Adams?
I'm going to ask this, um, one forty-five grand school street, and I'm, I may not be the owner of the, but, um, being in the middle of college campus, I know college kids every year they come in and party. However, the one house that is always a problem, it seems to be giving progressive looks, because one thing is, if you go down North Main, the house directly next to St. Louis. This weekend, they actually had a Halloween party from Thursday to Sunday mornings, and the police recall, two fire engines, and it's just unbearable, and this is every week. The party starts, the party usually starts about seven o'clock Thursday night, and it's just party after party, and then when they're not partying, it's waking up two o'clock and firecrackers, every week. Can something be done? And then, the second issue I have is, is with the leaves. Every time, it's the canyon leaves, on the side of the street that I live, there are the trees. However, my landlords go out of their restaurant to actually break leaves to clear the drainage, and it's not just North Main, it's all over. It's all over the city, where the whole, it's just, you know, everywhere you go, whatever happens is water, it's water everywhere, it's water deep in the street, and if we have street sweepers, you know, they need to actually clean the streets. And then the next thing I have, which I have pictures, where it's four pictures across, with the construction that's going on at the bank though. And with that, I'm afraid to walk when they utilize their crane, because their crane is actually sitting halfway on the sidewalk, halfway on the street, and the ones that, the part that is actually sitting in the street is propped on wooden blocks, and I have a picture that shows it. I'm afraid that one day, it's gonna pick up something, and it's gonna tilt halfway, and it's gonna fall through the square, and somebody's gonna die. And then my last, my last question, my last thing is a question, um, that goes back to the Gaspar, has that been completed, and if the report is published, is it available on ready to know?